Good evening, welcome to the Norwood Board of Selectmen's Meeting for the 21st of April 2020. Tonight, as we always do, let us begin with a pledge of allegiance to our flag followed by a silent moment.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and
Thank you all, please be seated. We have two public hearings this evening, the first one being at 7:15, the second one being at 7:30, so we're trying to get a lot of business out of the way before that. That's one of the reasons we started this evening at 6:30. So with that said, we'll go right into new business, which is manager's contract. Per the manager's contract, the parties must meet with the manager no later than May 15, 2020, to discuss whether to continue employment of the general manager beyond December 17, 2020. That is something we're supposed to do legally, and tonight, all I expect from the board is to set a date between now and the date in May, so there's two dates available on Tuesdays, which would be May 5th and May 12th, and we could probably go on an executive session at that time, discuss it, and go from there. So does anybody have a choice?
Just, Mr. Chairman?
Sir.
Just a question, is it definitely an executive session matter? It seems to me that it would be, but I want, do my colleagues concur on that?
I do, I agree, Mr. Chairman, that it should be discussed in executive session.
And I believe it should be also, and I'll tell you why, because under the Attorney General's guidelines, if you're going to talk about somebody, you have to have them present, and if we're going to discuss certain issues we may or may not like, I think it's only appropriate that we do it in executive session.
Okay.
Personal.
Okay, and then, subsequent to the meeting, which must be held prior to May 15th, we also have a second obligation, which is to notify the general manager by June 15th-
June 15th, correct.
Whether or not we intend to make an offer.
Correct.
Okay, I'm fine with either date, but probably the sooner the better, but I'll go with everybody else.
Motion?
Move the 5th, May 5th.
Second?
I have a motion for May 5th for the discussion on the manager's contract, and I have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous, so we'll bring that back up for discussion on May 5th. We have a list, a lengthy list, obviously, from the town clerk's office about reappointments to certain positions, grave custodian, civil rights and measures, soldiers relief agent, animal control officer, airport commissioner, board of registrars, council on aging, constables, zoning, board of appeals, and several others, economic development committee. So, does anybody want to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, motion to reappoint, the list as shown.
Second?
I have a motion to reappoint everyone on this list, and I have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, unanimous. On that, before we move on to Article Number 3, I'd like to mention that we still have two vacancies on the permanent building construction committee, AKA PBCC. So if you know somebody that may be interested in helping us out, submit something in writing to the selectmen's office, and we'll take it from there. And secondly, there's a small little job in the town of Norwood called that of the fence viewer. The fence viewer actually investigates lines of demarcation where a neighbor may say, "That's on my property," or "You're approaching my property," one thing or another, but the point is, that person would go out and make a determination where the fence should actually be. So with that said, we need two people to be fence viewers. By law, we are required to have fence viewers, a minimum of two. So if you're interested in either the PBCC or being a fence viewer, and by the way, there's no salaries attached to either one of those, so, sad to say, but it's true. So if you're interested at all, again, contact the selectmen's office. Number 3 in our agenda is for signature of the board for one cemetery deed. Have a motion?
Motion to sign.
Second?
I have a motion to sign the cemetery deed, and I have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Moving on, the alcoholic beverage control commission submitting final approval for change of manager application for Old Colonial Restaurant Cafe from Paul Angelo to Paul Eckard. That has been approved, that's just a notice.
Information.
Second?
Notice of information to file, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Number 2, Mark Good, treasurer and collector of taxes for the town of Norwood, submitting recommendation that the board vote to extend the due date for property taxes from May 1, 2020 until June 1 of 2020, in accordance with Section 10 of an act to address challenges faced by the municipalities and state authorities resulting from the coronavirus, or COVID-19 as it's otherwise known. There's going to be some discussion, I think, because there is also another statute that we might want to consider, which is statute, Section 11, and I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Mazuko, our general manager, just to explain the difference between the two.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We met today, myself, you, and Mr. Good, and I had sent the board some communication over the weekend, that there's a number of different options under this bill. The option that we prefer is actually Section 11, not Section 10. The simple difference is Section 10 of the law allows us to move the due date for taxes from May 1 to June 1, and that's it. Section 11 keeps the due date as May 1, but allows folks to make payments up to May, up to June 29 with no penalties or no interest. They're not paid by June 29, penalties and interest would accrue back from the May 1 date, but that Section 11 gives residents more time and more flexibility, and also applies to water and sewer bills and excise tax bills as well. So it's the most resident-focused option, and it's more flexibility for the residents, so we believe Section 11, which would allow tax payments, the due date would still be May 1, but if they're paid before June 29, there would be no interest or penalties.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for the board? Mr. Maloney, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Mazuko, that extra 30 days might concern some in terms of the potential for more distressed cash flow. Do we, if you go with the Section 11 as you recommend, the due date remains, particularly for property taxes, May 1, right? So just, I know, a lot of property taxes are paid for by escrow companies, people who escrow their property taxes and their mortgage, those are still due May 1, okay? The escrow companies, however, that delay payment, are they likely to delay payment, do you think, on that?
Absolutely. We've already gotten calls here in just about every town hall in Massachusetts with escrow companies asking if the towns have adopted that Section 10. So, you know, you pay your mortgage every month, you're paying your taxes in that mortgage every month, an escrow company could simply delay that payment to June 1. They're required by their contractual obligations to pay taxes when they're due, so the only difference is whether that money sits in the escrow company's account for a month versus coming to the town. There's no added benefit to the taxpayer, they've paid their mortgage, they've paid their taxes through their mortgage, so it's whether or not the escrow companies and smaller banks hold on to that money for an extra month. This was really designed to benefit more of larger companies and escrow companies and large property holdings, but the average resident who pays their mortgage every month gains no benefit, and the escrow companies are certainly not sharing any gains they hold by holding on to that money with their mortgagees. And I'll give you a quick example, there's a company that, an escrow company, CoreLogic, who a majority of the mortgages get paid through, we get a big quarterly payment from them, about $5 million once a quarter. So if you replicate that out over 351 towns in the Commonwealth, there are companies that will be sitting on tens of millions of dollars of taxpayer money, not turning it over to the towns, not allowing us to have that money for cash flow, which we need to continue to pay, police and fire and everyone else, and there's really no benefit to the residents. So residents were struggling, we go to the June 29 date, it's giving them as much time as possible, whereas that May 1 date really is benefiting the escrow companies more than it's going to benefit a resident.
But the escrow companies might also take advantage of the additional time?
It's very unlikely. They're required, as part of their mortgage documents, to pay taxes when they are due, so the due date remains May 1. So they've collected it from folks, we feel they should turn it over to the town.
Okay, very good, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Maloney. Anything else from the board? One of my issues was, and my concerns was, that if we postpone everything for two months, will we have the cash flow to cover our payrolls and so on and so on? And Mr. Mazuko, myself, our town treasurer, and our town accountant had a meeting later this afternoon, we're in very good financial shape as far as intake of monies for taxes, so that will not be a problem at this point in time, so we could handle either one, we could handle a 60-day extension, we could handle a 30-day extension.
Okay.
According to the financial people here in the town hall. So do I have a motion?
In that case, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we waive the, that we waive the payment of interest and penalties on any excise tax betterment assessment in accordance with the provisions of Section 11 of Chapter 53 of the Acts of 2020.
Okay, do you have something on the motion?
Question, comment, Mr. Chair, if I could.
Sir.
In itself, this is a good news, bad news situation for, say, like retirees, who they're fortunate, their house is paid off, and there's no escrow, because the next quarterly payment on the real estate taxes is August 1, due date, and that's still going to be August 1. So theoretically, if a person waits till the end of June, or doesn't have the finances, plain and simple, to pay it early, then they've got to get it up again by August 1, just so they're aware of that, that that date still stands.
Correct, under either provision, that August date still stands. The legislature could always look to address that as well, but it's meant mainly to be relatively short-term, to give folks a little bit of time for things to normalize.
And one other thing on that motion, Mr. Manager, if you could, tell me if I'm wrong or not, but based on the average home value, say, $480,000, the monthly penalty would be for those two months, $14 roughly, per month?
It's relatively small, so if somebody did go beyond that June 29 date, and they made their payment a couple weeks into July, and the interest had begun accruing from May 1, the average homeowner for one quarterly tax bill, it's not that much money, maybe $20, you know, which is a lot to some, but if they're making that quarterly payment, the delay, and then if they miss on the delay, it's not substantial.
You know, to many people in the town, this is not a problem for them, but there are those workers out there, there may be a waitress or a waiter, who that's the only salary they have coming in, and they're not getting paid six to 16 weeks out from their employer and so on and so on, so every dollar counts for these people. So that's why, and I think these are the people it's targeted to, those are the people that'll reap the benefit.
Absolutely, giving them the maximum amount of time, and if somebody ever does have challenge paying their taxes, they can always contact the treasurer's office, there are payment arrangements we can make with individuals, there are other means that we can look to help individuals, so this provides the maximum flexibility focused on the average resident as opposed to an escrow company or a larger commercial holding.
Thank you. And to address Mr. Howard's issue, we don't know what's coming down the pike, I mean, there's going to be a lot of changes in the coming months. The state could very well come out with something like this, come the next tax payment too.
Absolutely.
Until we can all get back on our feet and moving forward again.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman?
Sir.
I'm sorry, I made the motion just to make my colleagues, or I think we'll need a second vote, to specifically with reference to water and sewer charges, or unless you want me to just amend my motion.
Section 11 allows any charge that's added to a tax bill, and those are considered bills-
Well, the only reason I say that is the town council added that as a separate point and recommended we vote separately. My motion was on excise tax, excise tax, betterment assessment, and then we also do want to include, I think, water or sewer charges, so if you want, I'll amend the motion and just add that. They're both under Section 11.
On that motion-
If the motion is adopting Section 11, it adopts all of them. To be clear, some cities and towns don't offer municipal water and sewer, so you may need to segregate that out. Some cities and towns have non-clients.
Very good, we'll take care of it. So I have a motion on the floor, and then we'll do a second vote on water and sewer, okay?
Okay, fine. So I have a motion on the floor and a second to extend out till June 29 for tax payment, excise tax, so on, property tax rather. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous?
Okay.
Mr. Maloney?
And then, I'd like to make a motion that we waive the payment of interest and penalties due from March 10 to June 29 on any water or sewer charges added to a tax bill in accordance with the provisions of the second section of Section 11.
Second?
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous? So that takes care of the unfinished business suit. Bringing us to number 3, which is a cow wash. Now, a high school post-prom party, Saturday, May 9, 2020, from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM, they're trying to raise money for the post-prom party, they want to know if they can have a cow wash in the parking lot behind the Norwood Theater, and personally, I'm going to be against it, but I'll tell you why, and I think most people will think this way. We don't know how long this is going to drag out for, but the worst thing we can do is bring a lot of people together for a cow wash, and we don't even know if there's going to be a post-prom party at this time. School is closed now across the state until probably September. They may have something, I'm just being hypothetical here, they may have something as far as a prom or a party sometime, maybe August or July, or whatever that might be, when it's appropriate, but right now, I don't see a need to get a lot of people together on the beginning of May for a cow wash. So, from the board.
Motion to table?
Motion to table, what we can do is come two weeks prior, we can reexamine this.
Wouldn't we be denying this, not that they have a cow wash, but this date, and then if things were dealt, they could ask for one later?
Right.
So we'll look at it at appropriate time, prior to.
Motion to deny, yes.
Second.
Thank you.
Motion to table till the appropriate time, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous?
Mr. Chairman, on that point-
Sir.
To what Bill and Tony said, I think we need to tell them that they can come back at a later date.
Correct.
Don't, just don't want to come across it, we just denied and say, "Go find something else." I mean, there was a reason, you've stated it, but we're denying it for that date, not that we're denying that cow wash.
Right, I think it's important to note, this is something that's appropriate for this time we're in, and we'd like to accommodate them as best we can, if they want to have another date, say, late August or early August, whatever that might be, we'll accommodate their need at that time. But right now, I have a motion and a second to table till a future date, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous? We have a report from the building inspector, his monthly report, motion to accept and file.
Second?
Just second on the motion?
On the motion, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just to note that year-to-date, building department inspection revenue is about $1,577,000 and 3/4, so it's running prorated about where it's been the last year or two, more or less in line with projections. However, remains to be seen what happens in Q4.
Well, that's just it, this report goes up and down depending on how the economy goes, and who's building what, and what big business comes into Norwood. I mean, we're looking at somebody else coming into Norwood very soon, and they may bring millions of dollars of renovations and so on and so on. So with that said-
Mr. Chairman, just-
Sir?
Just to follow up with Tom said, I mean, actually, March was a pretty good month, not dollar-wise, it was lower than the average, but the number of permits is the highest April, I mean, March in five years. So there were 91 permits, it was actually very, very good, and we're still tracking above our five-year high, we're still at a five-year-high March compared to the last five years.
I think they're doing very good.
We're actually doing good. I mean, this month will be tough because in '17 and '19, we had two big permits, so it's going to bring us, but we're still tracking really, really well, I mean, it's really good news, contractors are still working, permits are still being taken out, so hopefully that will continue.
See where we are, say, 30 years, 30 days from now, you know, it's just, but you're right, if the permits went out in March, then that's, the work goes on into the spring.
Construction will be one of the first things to open back up. The city of Austin, the city of Cambridge, put in construction moratoriums, they're already talking about the steps to reopen that, which will trigger that across the state, so.
And that's in a larger scale, but in a smaller scale, some families may decide to put off that bathroom, that new bathroom or that roof job or something, you know, new patio room in the back of the house or something like that, so that may hold off for a while. So you may see a dip, but I'm sure it's going to come right back up.
Yeah.
I have no other problems with that whatsoever, and I think it'll improve greatly in the months to come.
Mr. Chairman, I have one more thing, is this probably the appropriate time to thank Mr. Shubert for his-
Yes, it is.
His excellent service, I think, 32 years or something? He retired, what, four or five days ago, right?
Yes. He did, he retired last Friday, and the manager might want to speak on this in a moment, retired after 32 years of service to the town, and I think he's done a fantastic job.
Oh, yeah.
Mr. Mark, Matt Walsh, has taken over for him as the associate, and we've hired a new associate, so there's been big changes in that department, but I have great expectations to continue to do great work, as we've seen in the past few years. So with that, I congratulate Mr. Shubert, and I wish him a happy and healthy retirement for he and his family. Any other comments from the board?
He's a great gentleman, I mean, I've known him for a long, long time, as you all have as well, and I think we're fortunate enough to have had him for as long as we did, I think we're fortunate enough to have Matt coming right behind him, and the gentleman that is succeeding, Matt is an excellent individual as well in the construction industry, knows the tricks and all the rest that goes on, so that department, while undergoing significant changes, done excellent, excellent work, and I wish Mark a great retirement.
And I agree with all your comments. Mr. Plasko, you have something?
I just echo the same, I've known Mark for a long time, he's not only a gentleman, but very professional in his position. We work on the economic development committee and trying to attract businesses to town, and the one thing we're always hearing from developers and builders is how wonderful it is to work with the building department and the town of Norwood, as well as the other agencies that have to approve plans and so forth, and a lot of that is credited to Mark for his demeanor and his way of professionally handling the matters that came before him, and if there's anything follow-up that you still have to contact him for, I'm sure you'll be able to find him on the closest golf course.
I'm sure you will, sooner probably than later. Mr. Howard, you have something?
Absolutely. I really think Mark has done a very good job in the job all this time he's been here, and one thing is a point of how good this guy is. One, my times early on, checking the reports that we get every month of all the building permits, I said to Mark, "How come this, that, and the other one had low amounts for redoing a roof?" And he says, "Anytime I get a low amount on any type of construction," he says, "I require a signed contract by both parties substantiating that," you know, that someone's going to try to lowball, he always had it covered, and I thought that was absolutely brilliant on his part, that he did do something like that, and I just, I just so liked the job that Mark did, I thought he was a firm guy, but I also thought he was a fair guy, so it was a very good blend that he had, and I wish him only the best for he and his family and his retirement. Thank you.
Thank you for those very eloquent comments. Mr. Manager, do you want to put the frosting on the cake and say a few words?
Best building commissioner I've worked with, and Mark has been a pleasure, I've come to get to know him as a colleague and a friend, and we're certainly going to miss him, and true to the gentleman that he is, he delayed his retirement several times, the first couple times was just because I was trying to get him to not retire, and then finally I ran out of excuses, and the pandemic hit, and we used that as one excuse to keep him around just a little bit longer, but he stayed right up to the very end, helping us out, and we know that when the economy starts to completely open back up, we're going to probably bring Mark back on a short-term basis to help us out with that surge of construction that we're all anticipating at some point in the future, and he's already agreed to do that. So we are going to miss him professionally, and we're going to miss him personally as well.
I agree with your comments also, thank you, sir. That brings us up to, that's the usual business, that we finish the new business and the unfinished business. I'd like to also bring up the manager's update, if we could.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I might be able to-
We have plenty of time.
I might be able to get you all the way to 7:15. So I'll start with a couple of COVID-19 updates. Number one, I spoke with Congressman Lynch this weekend, who is working diligently for us, and he assured me of continued supplies for public safety, and we're grateful for it. It's obviously a sign of an exceptional representative when they contact you personally, he's got a large district in that, he would contact the town of Norwood personally to see how we were doing and see if we needed assistance with anything, we certainly appreciate that, so I thank Congressman Lynch for that. In terms of our case numbers, we're currently at about 310 cases in Norwood, we had been publishing our case number on Friday, we're now just doing that on Wednesday when the state releases those numbers, it's made it a little bit easier for us to get that, to have the state take that on for us. I want to talk a little bit for a moment about our numbers, I had announced this last Thursday, I have to talk with the health department, our numbers as a percentage seem on the higher side of the Commonwealth, and there's actually a couple of reasons for that. First is two smaller reasons, one is demographics and the other one is density. If you look at the demographics of COVID cases, they do tend to trend higher in lower socioeconomic brackets, and we do have some of those pockets in Norwood, and that's a smaller reason why our numbers are up. Another reason is the density, we are a fairly dense community compared to certainly all of our surrounding communities and many other communities in the Commonwealth. The second reason, and probably the one biggest factor, is the prevalence of nursing homes in Norwood. We have four nursing homes and two assisted living facilities in Norwood, that's a total of 655 beds, and unfortunately, as we know throughout the country, the impact on nursing homes has been substantial. Currently, more than 40% of our cases roughly are actually nursing home cases, and you're seeing that in a lot of communities where many of them, if they have a higher-than-average number, you look to the nursing cases, we just happen to have four nursing homes and two assisted living facilities totaling over 650 beds, and that's, of course, unfortunate. If those numbers, if those six facilities were simply right next door in Canton or Westwood, their numbers would be substantially higher, and ours would actually be right around the state average, if not a little bit lower. A third reason is we've always had good availability of testing in Norwood, you've been able to go down to Norwood Hospital and get a test since the very early days of COVID-19. I myself was the first person tested at Norwood Hospital, I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing, but they've not had supply chain issues, urgent care has been doing testing as well, so for residents in Norwood and folks working in Norwood, and of course, our case count is folks living in Norwood, the testing has always been fairly easily available, so when folks were asked to test by their doctor or a public health individual, it's been easy to access. Certainly, if a public health individual suggested you were quarantined and you should go get a test, and you had to drive 20 or 30 minutes, you had to drive into the city, it makes folks a lot less willing to do it. We've always had good testing availability here in Norwood, so kudos to urgent care, and particularly to Norwood Hospital for being well-prepared for an emergency like this. Fourth is very aggressive contact tracing by our health department, we are getting to cases within 24 hours, there are some communities out there that they're not getting to folks' contacts, and that's after somebody's tested positive and you're beginning to do the quarantine of their circle and folks they've come into contact with, we're there within 24 hours, some communities are out several days. That's one of the reasons, among many, that the state has ramped up their sort of statewide contact tracing, which we're going to be working with them as well, is to make sure that folks aren't necessarily having to wait several days to get a call that they were in contact with somebody who had been near somebody who tested positive for COVID-19. Our public health staff are also very aggressive in directing folks who they're contacting, who have been positive or quarantined, to get tested. I myself am both a victim and a beneficiary of that, where the public health nurse quite bluntly told me, "Go get a test," and I said, "Well, I just get a little cough, it really doesn't necessarily meet the, meet the conditions," and she said, "Nope, absolutely not, you go get a test, no circumstances do you go anywhere without getting a test." So we've been very aggressive in that testing, whereas some doctors' offices and in some locations, they're not necessarily as aggressive, they're saying, "Well, you know, you're near somebody, you don't feel well, maybe you should stay home." We've been very aggressive about doing that, so our, the aggressive level and experience level of our public health department has made sure that we've been on top of this since day one, and I think, as everyone knows, Norwood was sort of an early, early case factor with COVID-19. As I said, a lot of our cases, over 40%, are nursing home-related, a substantial portion of the remaining cases are actually folks that we're seeing who are essential employees, so we have really controlled throughout the Commonwealth that generic community spread by folks staying home, wearing their masks, and practicing their good hand washing, so that's a, the news is grim overall, but that's actually a positive highlight. But that really is one of the reasons why you're seeing a higher-than-average across the state number for Norwood, and when you take a look at all those factors, I'm actually surprised it's not even higher, so I think we're doing very well in that regard. Before I move on to my next items, any specific questions about that, and if they're really hard ones, we get to defer to the health department because they're the experts.
Questions from the board? There was one question I have, and it's kind of related but not related, where do we stand on the food program for the-
I have a whole section on food security, I will get to that in just a moment.
Back to you.
Similar or related, that, as you know, we've established a Norwood fund, which is some of our existing donation funds, as well as one specifically for food security. I'm happy to announce that we received a very generous donation from Dioro Engineering right here in Norwood of $10,000, they brought that in on Friday, they are a small local firm, they did not really want much recognition, but we feel it's important to give them some recognition because they're really giving to the community in a time of need, that money will go directly to helping Norwood families. In addition, we've received through checks in the mail and online donations, another about $8,000. So we're up to just under $20,000 total in the Norwood Fund, which is going to help seniors, veterans, and anyone suffering from food insecurity, as well as folks suffering from income security issues as a result of COVID-19. The money does go quickly, but kudos to Dioro Engineering, to the many folks in town who have donated. We greatly appreciate the donations that have come in. I believe tomorrow or the next day, I will be announcing another large donation from a local partner who's always been very generous to the town. More to come on that. I would just want to make sure we get the confirmation, the number, but folks are stepping up, and we greatly appreciate it. We've contacted a few other large businesses in town, and they're looking to see what they can do, but residential, support from residents has been substantial, and we appreciate it. In terms of food security, I want to talk a little bit about what we're doing sort of globally, and just briefly start with why food security is such an important issue. I think, as everyone knows, the folks at home and certainly the board, the job loss that we've seen in the community has been primarily working-class job loss. It's folks who are, as you said earlier, waitresses and bartenders and hairstylists. And one of the problems is the unique nature of the job loss. You know, normally, if a restaurant closes down, a waitress or a bartender can usually go find work at another restaurant. If a barbershop closes down, they can go find work at another barbershop. Well, when all of your restaurants are closed down, when all of your barbershops are closed down, all of a sudden, there's nowhere they can take those skills and work for. So a cook in one restaurant now has nowhere else able to go. So really, it's taken the legs out of folks whose income level is already in a lower bracket, who are already on the marginal earnings spectrum. And even though SNAP benefits and other things will catch up, a few weeks without that level of food, without that level of income causes serious distress to families throughout the community. As you know, a lack of food security and regular meals not only has a substantial physical health implement, impact on individuals, it has a serious impact on their mental health as well. And lack of access to regular food can lead to not only physiological issues, but psychological issues, substance abuse issues, and a lot of other issues. We are seeing them, consistent with other communities, happen as our folks are struggling throughout the community. We've received a lot of calls through our veterans line, through our senior line, and through our call center for folks who have never needed any kind of food aid before, and have found themselves out of a job and out of money and are really out there suffering. And we've been able to help a lot of them so far, and we want to continue doing that. In terms of food security as a whole, there's quite a few things that we're doing. A quick shout-out to the cafeteria workers in Norwood, who have been working every single day since this beginning. They have produced over 30,000 meals for families. Those are breakfasts and lunches in Norwood. That's largely covered through the USDA as part of the regular school lunch program. So kudos to these men and women who are still working every day, producing tons of breakfasts and lunches. One thing in particular they've been able to do that we're going to fund locally if we're not able to get donations to cover it, is they've started a family meal program as well. Now, any family with children 18 or under in the town, and incidentally, for both the breakfast and lunch program and the weekly family meal program, you don't have to have a student at the Norwood Public Schools, as long as you live in Norwood. They can go to St. Catherine's, they can go to Severian, they can go to Blue Hills, they can be homeschooled, they can go to any number of schools as long as you live in Norwood. You sign up ahead of time once a week, you can now get a family meal. This past week, it was a lasagna, it was 10 portions, and it came with a garden salad. So you're able, we're able to provide a family meal once a week to those families as well, an evening meal, a dinner meal. We did have one individual reach out to us who was a 1099 employee. Those folks have not been able to get unemployment yet, so they were kind of caught in this gap of all of a sudden losing all of their income and not having many resources. And they told us how wonderful it was to be able to have a hot cooked meal at home at dinner for the family. And of course, that's all courtesy of the Norwood Food Service Program. We're seeking donations through the Norwood Fund and through a couple of corporate sponsors, but we're committed to feeding the community and feeding everyone first and worrying about the challenges later, so we'll take care of that at the end of the year, one way or another. But our food service program, like our teachers and a lot of others, had upended their business model and are working every day to provide food for our family. The food pantry, the Ecumenical, is open and operating. We are working to establish a short-term food bank operation at the high school. We think we're going to call it the Mustang Pantry. That will start off with, it's actually already started off with donations coming in and volunteers working, and we're working through the Ecumenical Food Pantry to order food through the Greater Boston Food Bank. That will come at a cost. That's how many food pantries do work. It's a small charge per pound of food, but we know that the ability, the need is going to ramp up. The food bank normally serves 50 or 60 families a week. They're already up to about 80 or 90. There's about 100 or 200 families in the school department that are usually in need of food assistance. We know we're going to try to reach them, so we're going to start this temporary food bank up to deal with sort of the surge of the need in food, focusing first on school families, and then we'll expand it from there once we get our feet wet. And then, as the need normalizes, we'll sort of scale down, and then eventually it'll go back to just our partners at the Ecumenical Food Pantry. And they've been great to work with throughout this. For veterans and seniors and other residents who have no resources and you can't seem to access any of these items, you can always call the Senior Center. If you're a senior, call the Veterans Office if you're a veteran, or call this call center. The call center number, again, is 781-352-2363. And we can find a way to get you help. We do have funds available and resources available to get some folks immediate food aid, and we're happy to provide that. We're also training our call center staff to assist with SNAP benefits. Those are your monthly food SNAP benefits. Currently, Tricia at the Senior Center does this and has been doing great. We're looking to train a few more of the staff at the call center to just help folks through the application process. It is a fairly straightforward application process. It's a little complicated if you've never done it before, and we're getting a lot of people who are saying, I've never done this before, I've never needed to, how do I do it? We're working on helping them through it. And there's a lot of folks, if you're not sure you're available for it, try, because there's a lot of categories that are there where you can get some assistance. As I said, we're getting calls from individuals who have never received any kind of support or benefits in their lives, and they're simply out of food for their families and for themselves, and we want to help them, and we are working diligently to help them. One last item on the food security piece, we are looking at creating a singular social media presence for all the different food security options out there we have in the community. There's a lot of them. There's the school meal programs, there's the Ecumenical, there's what the town can do, there's the SNAP benefits. So we're looking to consolidate that on one social media presence, be able to do some translations to help folks in need as well. Because if we put all the information that's out there through our regular social media channels, it would really just start to sort of choke them up. But we're going to look at, by the end of the week, having that consolidated in one place, so that's the one area you can go to for food-related challenges, which is a big issue that the community is facing. I will take a pause there before I go into a budget outlook and answer any questions the board has.
Questions from the board?
Just real quick, I had the pleasure of talking to Mr. Ricardi a little while ago, and I guess, can you explain the role of Mr. Miller and Ms. Durene in the food program?
Yes, thank you. Ms. Durene is, was actually the one who got this started to take care of families at the high school, that they normally have a small food bank there, that they would help out a few families. And she knew that those families would be in need, so she was able to get this up and running off the ground and do a lot of the marketing and the PR, and get some of her team in there to help with the donations. And because we knew, so she's been fantastic to, working with this so far. And Mr. Miller, we've asked to help us coordinate the sort of day-in-and-day-out delivery and pickup of food options, and he's agreed to do that through the next couple of months. So to be clear, without Ms. Durene or Mr. Miller, this would not be happening. We have a number of people working on different issues in the community. Carrie McCarthy at the Senior Center is sort of overseeing food security at this level, and like any bureaucracy, then you sort of have Bernie, and then you sort of have Sagal and me up here. But the folks on the ground, it's Cindy and Jerry Miller, and we're grateful to both of them for their work. And they both have brought in a lot of volunteers, and we're grateful to the volunteers they've brought in. Things like this are difficult in an era of physical distancing, where you're trying to take a lot of equipment in and out, and a lot of food in and out, and you're trying to stay separate from each other, and everyone's wearing masks and gloves. So it's been challenging, but kudos to the both of them for getting this up and running, and this will serve the community well. It's a critical need over the next 30, 60, 90, 120 days.
Thank them for us, please.
Anything else from the board? Seeing nothing?
All right. I'll move on to a budget and fiscal outlook. I believe the board has received their fiscal budget books. I've got five minutes left. I'll get you right to 7:15. I believe you received your fiscal budget books. Thingcom is doing their review of the budget now. Getting the general government budget in brief within the 3.5% was a little tough. We had to make some trimming here and there, but we've come in within that override requirement of the general government budget. As for the impact of the COVID-19 on the economy and on the budget, there's a couple of things to consider that I think the board should be aware of, or actually, I think you are certainly aware of. Local governments tend to trend a year and a half to two years behind state and federal governments in terms of the impacts of a recession, if we are seeing a short-term recession. The only revenues for us that are really susceptible to that, there's the meals and the hotels' tax, and then there's state aid. We'll see a short-term drop. Those will start to normalize over time as well. Total local receipts and total state aid are still less than probably 20% of the budget, so even if they took a large hit, you're still looking at something that's only likely a couple collection, a couple percentage points within the overall budget. The state aid, the state has not released any budget numbers since their last issue, so if they were to pare back, the plan that we have is we're moving our capital purchases to the fall, with the exception of a couple of critical items we have to purchase over the, over the summer. We'll preserve our free cash, so that way, if we do see any revenue losses. And most of our numbers have been trending very well this year, up until COVID-19, so that will insure us against any losses at the end of the year from revenues not meeting their targets. And tax collection is still coming in very good, which is important. In the fall, sort of in post, if you will, we'll be able to take a look at where we are, see where we need to plug the budget. We'll know where the state economy is going, where the national economy is going. If we do need to look at an FY22 budget that's substantially reduced from there, we can start making those decisions early in October, where we start not filling positions and we start reallocating resources. So, and remember, the budget as projected going into next year, already projected 90% of last year's local receipts as an objective, as a projected number. So next year's budget as it is could take a 10% loss in local receipts, and we would still be coming in. That was a good financial policy that we put in place and a good financial practice, and that's going to ensure stability going forward. It's important to remember that between the override stabilization and regular stabilization, we're putting $1.1 million into savings next year. So we are going into a budget year, even though there's some uncertainty out there, putting a substantial amount of money into the bank, having fair flexibility in our resource, in our revenue projections, that we should be stable, not only through the end of this fiscal year, but well into next year. And then we have a lot of options going into the following fiscal year, if we do have to make adjustments coming down, if by October, the economy hasn't continued to normalize. The state numbers are going to look grim, and that does have an impact on local aid, but it's important to remember that a thousand people not paying into income tax is a huge loss to the state. There's no direct loss to the municipal coffers. The same thing with the sales tax. A mall in Braintree shuts down, and that doesn't, that has a serious impact on the state's revenue. It doesn't directly have an impact on our revenue. Indirectly, through job loss and inability to pay, there's an impact there, of course. But our revenues are going to be generally stable, and where we're going to see cuts, we feel we'll be able to absorb them. If there's a longer-term recession, we weathered the 2008 recession in Norwood fairly well. We need a growth in our local receipts and state aid to be able to cover our expenses every year, and where we have pressure is that when there's not enough growth, that's when we have to go back to starting to say, well, we're not doing that or we're not doing this. But the outlook is cautiously optimistic, that if things normalize by the fall, it'll just be a matter of some money out of the bank and a little bit more borrowing for capital than we would have otherwise done. But we were going into a year with the biggest free cash purchase we were going to have of capital items in a very, very long time. So we're otherwise fairly stable in that sense. So with that, I'll take any questions in the minute or two I have left that the board may have on the?
Just one thing. Mr. Muzuka, the Finance Commission is meeting Thursday at, I think, 4:00 in the afternoon. Capital Outlay is one of the items on the agenda. Will you have the slides ready?
I do. We're going to have the full presentation ready, but there's only three items that we're recommending go forward at the annual, for the fact that we want to keep the town meeting as short as possible, only do the bare minimum business if we're going to get all these people in a room. And there's just three capital items that we need to get approval to purchase prior to the, at the annual, to make sure that we can do those projects over the summer. Every other project can wait. In some of the cases, they'll have to wait until approval in the fall.
That's, that's a good idea. Probably, we should at least present the way it was voted, at least to explain how, you know, prior, March 5th, I think, is when we met. This is how we were planning. These are the things we were going to fund, and these, this is how we were going to pay for them. Under the circumstances, we think, your office thinks, I agree, that we have to, we have to do things differently and curtail our spending on capital.
Absolutely.
Okay, that's fine. Mr. McQuaid will need the slides, I guess. Thank you.
My pleasure, Mr. Maloney. Anything else? Seeing nothing. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
One thing I want to get in before I can do it at 7:15 public hearing, is the Norwood Hospital reached out to me late this afternoon, and they would like to put a sign in the general uptown area, possibly two signs, not very large, the usual signs, either A-frame or something else, to thank all the first responders, the hospital workers, the nurses, everybody that's been out there doing the job to make everybody else's life a better life and a safer life. So I'd like to get a motion to...
So moved. Second?
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
And I was going to complete this by saying, probably for a period of no more than two weeks. Thank you, gentlemen. With that said, we have a 7:15 public hearing, and I'm going to read the notice as required by law. Application has been made to the licensing board of the town of Norwood by ILC Ventures, L.L.L., doing business as Little Bird Events, Angela Morangie, manager of license under Section 12, Chapter 138, and Chapter 140 of the Massachusetts General Laws, as amended for the change of license category from wine/malt beverage to all alcohol beverages to be drunk on the premises of 83 Moore Street, Building 4, Unit F, in change of hours. Description of the premises is as follows: 2,600 square feet, one floor, four rooms, one entrance, three exits, and seating capacity of no more than 80 people. And a public hearing will be held on Tuesday, April 21, 2020, at 7:15 in Memorial Hall here in Norwood. And here we are. And I have Angela Morangie with us this evening. If you'd like to just step up, and just for the record, I know I've already mentioned her name, but just introduce yourself and give us a little capsulation of what you intend to do.
Sure. Hi, everyone. My name is Angela Morangie, and I'm the owner of Little Bird Events at the Moore Street property. And we are an event space, and we do small functions such as bridal showers, baby showers, small weddings, fundraisers, and some public events as well. And the nature of our business is gathering, just like most of the restaurant industry, who is suffering right now, but we are hopeful that once this is over, that we'll recover and we'll be able to gather in the future. So we are a place that people come to celebrate and also to do business for corporate events.
Thank you. And if I could just interject one thing here, too. Appropriate notices to give to the public are we adding this, this meeting this evening. And with that said, anything from the board? Mr. Howard, sir?
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
Nice to see you here.
Nice to see you, too.
First question out of two is, do you feel that, that getting the full alcohol license would, would improve on your business?
I do, and mainly because of the demand from the clients that I have coming to my business. Quite simply put, the more variety you can offer your, your clients, the better chance you have to capture their business. Simply stated, not everybody drinks alcohol, beer and wine. There are people, some people like other varieties of alcohol. We have plenty of non-alcoholic options as well, but having more, a craft cocktail menu to align with the custom food options we have there, I think, would benefit the services we offer.
Thank you for that. The, the other thing I wanted to ask is, would you say that every server that you will have will be tip-certified?
100%. I'm tip-certified, obviously, myself.
Excellent.
Yes.
Thank you, Angela. Appreciate it.
Mr. Maloney, sir?
Thank you. Thank you for coming in, Angela. Just, you talked about different hours. Can you tell us about, tell us the hours you plan to operate?
Sure. Essentially, I'd like to extend hours by one hour or one and a half hours from what I currently do. And for the most part, it's because the nature of my business entails lots of other vendors and services that come in, florists, balloon makers, people tend to bring gifts for the people holding the events. So if I do last call 15 minutes before close, it's not usually enough time for people to wrap up and gather, collect their things in a timely manner. So really, the extra time would just allow me to have a buffer to get the customers out of the building and then for us to close up as we normally would.
So it'll be, what, what days are we talking about?
We, we are requesting that on Friday and Saturday, from, we move from 11:00 p.m. closure to midnight, and for the remainder days, to close at 11:30 p.m.
We, we, the remaining days are what?
I'm sorry, Sunday through Thursday, moving from 10:00 p.m. to 11:30.
Okay. So 11:30. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Hujar?
Thank you, Angela, for coming in. It's always nice to see a face to put to the name. Just, thank you for responding to the questions I sent to you.
Sure.
Just to clarify the Sunday hours, in your response, you said you want to change it from 9:00 to 11:00. Are you now just saying?
Oh, I'm sorry. I misspoke. What, what I wrote to you is, is what my application says. I'm sorry.
Okay, so she's asking for Sunday to be moved from 9:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m.?
11:00.
Second, I think it's, it's great that you're doing this. It's good for you, good for the town, and it's great that it's a Norwood resident that's the owner of this business, trying to, to make it so. I wish you all the luck
Thank you.
in your endeavors.
Thank you.
Anything else from the board?
No comments from the public. I'd make a motion to close the hearing.
The right of comments from the public, seeing none.
Second?
I'll take your motion, and I'll take your second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Thank you, and thank Angela. Sir?
Motion to approve.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
Thank you very much.
Angela Morangie, thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
We have a 7:30 scheduled. If Mr. Shelby is ready, no, we can't take you because it's scheduled for 7:30. So why don't we take a brief recess for about 7:30?
Members' agenda, if any?
Can we get it done in 10 minutes?
I think so.
I hope so, too. All right, Mr. Maloney, sir? Agenda for this evening?
Oh, right. Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and it is an honor to be, to be meeting in this space where we are surrounded by the names of our fallen heroes from the various wars, including thirteen of them who died in World War I, thirteen Norwood residents who fell in World War I, all of whom died as a result of the Spanish influenza. And I mention that only because of the obvious analog. We are facing a virus that is as the greatest in intensity since anything, since the Spanish influenza. I call special attention to a name who's, it's always fascinated me, Navy Lieutenant Robert Vickery, who was one of the thirteen who died in World War I. He also served this town in the Spanish-American War when he was thirty years old. So twenty years later, he went off to fight again, died at the age of fifty. He's buried up at Highland Cemetery with his mother, who died shortly after he did. That's Navy Lieutenant Robert Vickery. But it is inspiring to be in here and awe-inspiring at the same time. And just in times like this, I do want to thank Mr. Mazuka and everybody here at the Town Hall who are working, I know, extra hard in this time of crisis, and all of our staff, all of our department heads, all those people who are putting together, the food bank people, it's incredible. They're doing an incredible job, and I want to thank them, and we appreciate their service. As Deion Sanders says, the great philosopher, "We're going to get through this. I guarantee it." Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for your moment in history, and thank you for your eloquence.
I know you missed those.
Mr. Plasko, sir?
Thank you. I know in this time of the COVID-19 situation and all the work, as Mr. Maloney pointed out, that staff's doing, associated with that, we're sometimes probably getting away from the regular business. And there's one matter that's been bothering me for quite a while that I want to speak about, and that is, we started some discussion about the repaving of town parking lots well over a year ago. We've had several meetings where we've been told the plans are ready, they'll be being presented to us very shortly. We were assured that it wouldn't go out to bid until we saw those plans. And in fact, on March 26th of last year, this board voted unanimously that no contract would be signed for that work until we've seen those plans. And it just seems like I don't understand why that's taking so long, especially when, I think it was in October, we were told the plans were ready. I think we should see that. I know we're not doing any work today, but if we don't pay attention to these things, we forget about them, then purchasing does its thing and goes out to bid, and before you know it, it's done, when we made a very specific point that we'd like to review these. So I just want to call that to manage attention, that I'd like some follow-up on that. Thank you.
Mr. Mazuka, would you like an opportunity to respond?
We will have them for you on May 5th on Hillside Avenue.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Plasko. Mr. Howard?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just, I'd like to reiterate again, because the people out there, the residents of Norwood just can't appreciate what your employees in the Town Hall are doing for you, seriously. That, at one time, Mr. Mazuka, how many days in a row did you work? Seriously, is it still going?
I had about a day or two off since March 2nd, but I did about a forty-day stretch there.
Okay, okay. So, our Board of Health, Our Ladies in our department, I mean, people would think there's nothing going on. All the departments in this Town Hall are staffed every day with a skeleton crew. If people need to do business in the Town Hall, they can call and get an appointment and meet with those people, as I understand it. Am I correct?
Absolutely.
Yes. So, life is still going on here, folks, that I had seen a comment on social media that said, "Have we laid off this and that, people?" No, we haven't. But in all seriousness, Mr. Mazuka and everybody who works for, Public Works is still out there every day, doing what they do, picking up your trash, the leaf bags and that stuff, and fixing water leaks and what have you. And of course, our electrical people are out there. During the heavy storm, they were working hard, and just, I'm dragging it on just to say, thank you so much to all these people that are working for the Town of Norwood, what they've been doing here out of this Town Hall, and our public safety people, of course, also. Can't thank them enough.
Thank you, Mr. Howard.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Howard. Mr. Hujaj?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll just add my name to the long list of individuals who are crediting what the employees of this town are doing, as well as the volunteers who are out there doing lots of other things, either making masks, making deliveries, doing a lot of other things. So it's a great combination. It's a great town. Congratulations. Hopefully, we won't have to go a long time further, we've seen declining numbers. And that's a good thing, so let's, let's hope for the best. I do want to acknowledge two sports individuals, one in basketball, Megan Aubries. She is a sophomore. She was the Tri-Valley League MVP. She had a great, great season. She's also great in volleyball. She was named as an All-Scholastic. And the same is true for Elizabeth Broderick. She is a junior in gymnastics. She placed sixth in the all-around. So I congratulate the both of them for an outstanding year and for being named as All-Scholastics. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. And if I could just touch on something quickly. If you drive by the Town Hall during the course of the day, you may see very few cars in the parking lot, but not only the Town Hall, but many areas around the town, they're working with skeleton crews. They don't want to put everybody in the same area together, so they're staggering crews and so on, and so on. But much of the work is being done, especially from this building remotely, and I'm sure that goes with many other places around the town. So even though you don't see us, we're out there, in many cases, in their homes, doing the appropriate work that has to be done to keep this town moving forward. And as everybody understands in this town, we are a town of greatness. We have people who donate money. Mr. Mazoko, Mr. Mazuko, now I'm doing it. Mr. Mazuko, earlier this evening, had talked about a $10,000 donation that was not solicited. Somebody just stepped forward and did it. And there are many other people out there who have donated money to the food, the food bank, or whatever the case may be. So we are a great town, and we will continue to be a great town, and we will get through this. I promise you, we will get through this. And with that said, we have a seven-thirty public hearing, and this notice has been publicized and put out there appropriately, so everybody has at least a forty-eight-hour notice. Again, it is a public meeting. The application to amend license to store volatile inflammable fluids notice is hereby given that the Board of Selectment of the Town of Norwood will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, April 21st, 2020, at seven-thirty p.m. in the Memorial Hall of the Town Hall on application of Rojo Company, Inc. for amendment in storage from 48,000 gallons to 40,000 gallons of gasoline, and from 9,950 gallons of diesel to 20,000 gallons of diesel, plus 3,000 gallons of diesel exhaust. Fluid underground at 69 Boston Province Highway, Norwood, Massachusetts, as shown on the plan, on file with the Town Clerk, Room 32, Norwood Memorial Municipal Building, and available for inspection. Signed, the Board of Selectment by Paul A. Bishop, Chairman. And with that said, this evening, we have Mr. John Shelby, Jr., and would you, again, just introduce yourself for the record and give us an overlay exactly what you're trying to do?
Sure. My name's John Shelby from Rojo Company. Currently, we are doing an overlay of the new tanks. The tanks are about thirty years old. We're not required to pull them out, but we feel it's the right time to pull them out. They're a double-wall fiberglass tank with leak detection, so there's no law requiring us. We just want to update and modernize our system. So we're not changing that much storage capacity. We're going from around 57,000, 58,000 gallons in total to sixty, just because tanks these days come in either 10,000 or 20,000 increments. And it's just more so to modernize the site with more modern leak detection and more modern dispensers.
I think the total change would be an increase of 5,050 gallons all total.
Correct.
You're reducing the gasoline, and you're increasing on the diesel.
Correct.
That would be significant to me, that says that you are selling more diesel than you are gasoline.
That's correct, yes.
Thank you. So the issue tonight is whether we want to approve the VIF application for an amendment. I know there's been a discussion about tanks and this and that, but that is in the purview of the Fire Department and possibly the DEP. But right now, tonight, all we want to do is approve the VIF license amendment.
And it has been approved by our Fire Department.
It has been approved by our Fire Department, but we have to vote. And that's as far as we have to go this evening. There'll be other discussions at other times, but tonight, all we have to do is approve that VIF license, volatile inflammable fluid license.
Just a question, Mr. Chair. Mr. Shelby, the new tanks are presumably, I mean, because they're new, they're safer, but isn't the technology advanced over the last thirty years in storage?
Absolutely. So what they do now is, there's a double wall, and in between that, there's a leak-detection system that wraps the tank. It's almost like an internal bladder. And what that does is, if there's any sort of moisture, anything coming out of that tank, it breaks the first barrier and gives us a warning, and that gives us the ability to remediate or fix that issue, so nothing will ever get into the ground for an environment. So it's a technology aspect, and it's just a safer, it's a safer way to do it.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sir? Mr. Plasko?
Yeah, the only thing we're really, before us tonight, is the VIF license, but I wanted to address a little. You're doing more than that. You're changing your pumps and everything out front. You're doing some updating.
Yes, we have to, because of PCI compliance. Everything has to go to chip and PIN, no more credit card swipes. So the dispensers we have right now currently are all credit card swipes. The payment card industry gave the gas stations the last kind of, you know, pass until October 2020 to get rid of all swipes and go to chip and PIN. So this is what kind of spurred the whole project of the credit card industry.
Thank you.
Chair, look, nothing from Mr. Howard? Mr. Hujaj?
Yeah, no, I support this. It, you know, obviously, any local business that's trying to improve themselves is great. You have, your family has a long history here, great family, and wish you well. We are just talking about the license itself, not the individual tanks here. It's just an amended license that allows them to proceed. To me, this is like, you know, we approve the plan, and then they go for permits down the road, and those permits get decided by the building, you know, commissioner, so this will be the same thing.